Ten. Five. Good evening, everybody. It's Tuesday, March twenty-nine, two thousand and twenty-two. I'm Vincent Salimi, the mayor of the city of Pinole, and I call to order the Pinole City Council Special Meeting. Item number one, can you please join me in honor and do the pledge of allegiance in honor of the U.S. Military Troop, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Item number two, land acknowledgement. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Olone people, who are the traditional custodians of this land. We pay our respect to the Olone elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Olone Land, the land that Pinole sits upon, their home. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Olone community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Item number three, roll call, City Clerk Report and Statement of Interest, Statement of Conflict. Madam City Clerk, good evening.
Good evening.
May I please have the roll call?
Yes, thank you. Mayor Salimi.
Here.
Mayor Protem Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Tave.
Here.
Councilmember Tombs is joining us virtually. Councilmember Tombs, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Took me a minute. I'm here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Durbin.
Here.
City Manager Murray.
Here.
City Attorney Kasher.
Here.
Mayor and Council, the agenda was posted on Thursday, March twenty-fourth at five P.M. with all legally required notices. No written comments were received in advance of the meeting. Does the council have any conflicts to report this evening? Seeing none, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Then I will move on to item number four, citizen to be heard. Do we have any specific, do we have any court tonight, any citizen who wish to talk, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. In person, we have Debbie Long.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. And through the mayor, I'd like to make a clarification, or get one, hopefully. At the council meeting of three fifteen, we had discussions and comments regarding the development proposal for the Kmart site consisting of two hundred and twenty-three apartments, as well as Pinole becoming a charter city. Some of the discussions took place under citizens to be heard, and some others took place under old business regarding the polling for your charter city. It's always been that citizens choosing to speak should not be attacked for their opinions, nor should a citizen be chastised or humiliated in a way that may keep them from speaking in the future. Unfortunately, it appears that the previous decorum is not being adhered to by the Mayor Protem. In response to the citizen comments that were opposed to the large apartment complex, he stated several times that the residents of Pinole don't want new people in Pinole. Not only was his analysis factually incorrect, it was offensive and divisive as well. The Mayor Protem has no background on which to derive such a conclusion. He lived and graduated from high school in Vacaville and has attended much of his short adult life in San Francisco and Southern California. The first time I was aware of him was when he spoke before the council in April of two thousand and eighteen and made an ageist statement then. And I am paraphrasing, he said that the old generation needed to step down and let the younger generation lead. Then in two thousand and nineteen, he applied for the Planning Commission, and as we know, in two thousand and twenty, he was elected to the council. So in the short four years that the Mayor Protem has been a part of this city, I doubt if he knows anything about the city of Pinole, not wanting, as he puts it, "new people" in Pinole. I welcome development, and this city is now fortunate enough to be able to move forward with some development. However, not all projects are appropriate in their design, size, or site. Because people disagree with a particular size and location of a project, as is with the Kmart site and the two hundred and twenty-three apartments, this does not lead to a conclusion that we do not want new people in Pinole. Mayor Protem, I believe you owe the citizens of Pinole an apology for making a statement that was meant to embarrass and humiliate citizens that were simply expressing their opinions, and I might add, opinions that are much more factually founded, than a statement that was made, which was meant to be divisive and, in many cases, insightful. Thank you.
Thank you. I heard you. I just want to state for the record that I believe that the Mayor Protem has enough experience, and he has been on Planning Commission and City Council member for two years and third year as Mayor Protem. Thank you. Next citizen who wish to talk, please?
The in-person comments are complete. Do we have a virtual speaker?
Good evening, Mayor. No, we do not have any virtual comments.
I'm not sure if that came through. So, no, we don't have virtual comments, and we might need a little assistance on the clerk booth mic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes item number four. Item number five, study session item. And tonight, we have one item, which is the special city council meeting to provide an overview of the city's revenue sources. And we have our finance director tonight, who's going to make us a presentation. Good evening, Madam Finance Director.
Good evening, Mayor. Do we have the presentation loaded?
Director Gilery, we do have it. Let's give the broadcast team a minute to pull that up. There we go. Thank you.
Thanks. Hey, good evening, Mayor Salimi, Mayor Protem Murphy, members of the city council, members of the public, and city staff who have joined us tonight for this special meeting. I'll be providing an overview of the city's revenues, and we'll be focusing on the city's tax revenues specifically. Next slide, please. So staff is not recommending any action be taken by the city council, whether this is to provide a report to the council, and again, on providing an overview of the city revenues, and we're gonna go into detail on the city's tax revenues. Next slide. So before I get into the background, this item came about as a result of the city council's request to place an agenda item on a future agenda to look at the city's tax revenues in detail, more detail than we usually cover through the budget process, and to inform both the city council and the general public on how the city generates its revenues and what those revenues are used for. Next slide. So to provide a brief bit of history here, overall, California cities relied on property tax as the main source of funds for general purpose services that cities provided prior to nineteen seventy-eight. In fact, property taxes go back to the mid eighteen hundreds. Sales tax was the second largest source of funding for cities. At that time, tax rates were set by city councils and controlled at the local level. There were challenges at that time, challenges against the practice of allowing the city councils to set those rates, and as a result, Proposition thirteen was enacted in nineteen seventy-eight. And that served to constrain local government's ability to raise taxes. It also set some caps, including a one percent cap on the full market value of property assessments, and it also capped the assessment growth. So the year-over-year growth was capped at two percent, or based on the Consumer Price Index growth, whichever came in less. So no more than two percent. Because cities continued to provide a number of services, and with those costs continuing to increase, and with the loss of the property tax revenue, cities responded by enacting local measures that they brought before the voters and were approved by the voters. And those included general purpose taxes, which, some of which the city of Pinole has, and that includes business licenses, or business license tax, transient occupancy tax, and the utility users tax. Cities also responded with special assessments by creating landscape and lighting districts, and the city of Pinole has one. And it also enacted property-related tax, such as parcel tax, and made adjustments and increases to real property transfer tax. So all of those were done in response to the reduced revenue that cities received from the property tax, given Proposition thirteen. Next slide. So Pinole also, like many of our peer agencies, responded to this with a number of what we call add-on measures. So this was above and beyond the property tax that it had historically received, as well as sales tax. Starting in nineteen seventy-five, Pinole enacted the business license tax to support general purposes. In nineteen eighty-six, the transient occupancy tax, or T O T, was enacted. That was amended in nineteen ninety-one to increase the rate from eight percent to ten percent. In nineteen ninety-eight, the city enacted the utility users tax, or U U T. The U U T was extended in two thousand and four, so was extended in the sense of continuing to impose the eight percent fee. So the rate did not change, but the timing did. In two thousand and six, the city enacted the two thousand, Measure S two thousand and six, sales tax. That was a zero-point-five percent sales tax added to the base sales tax. And this also supported general purposes. However, there were some more detailed actions that the city wanted to take and to provide adequate staff levels and service levels, especially in the police department, giving some issues with crime at that time, and also to maintain some of its infrastructure, such as roadways and storm drains and water control. Next slide. In two thousand and twelve, the U U T was extended once again, and that was to keep the rates stable, but to be able to bring in additional revenue to maintain a high quality of life in the city of Pinole, and to also continue to provide general services. In two thousand and fourteen, the city enacted Measure S two thousand and fourteen, sales tax, another zero-point-five percent sales tax, to maintain essential police and fire services, as well as prevent the reduction in some of the community services, including youth, family, and senior programs. And then in two thousand and eighteen, the U U T was extended indefinitely, so no sunset date was included in that. So currently, that is still in place at eight percent, and it is not set to end. This was also to maintain city services, mainly in the police and fire protection services, as well as maintain and repair, or parks, maintenance and repair, and a number of community services. So these are all general services, but there were more defined purposes that were included on the ballots for these measures. Next slide. So to provide a general composition of California city revenues, this is taken from the state, one of the state websites, to show an aggregate of how, or what types of revenue cities receive, and how they're, what percentage they're receiving. So this is aggregated, doesn't represent any city, and some cities vary widely. So the idea is not to look so much at the percentage, but at the types of revenue. And as we can see, a large source of funding for cities comes in the form of tax revenues. Next slide. And to look at Pinole's composition of revenue in general, this is the general fund budget for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. And as we can see, eighty-one percent of the revenue budget comes from tax revenue, including the main sources, property tax and sales tax, as well as U U T, and the intergovernmental, which is the motor vehicle in Lufi. And we'll talk more in detail about these in just a few slides. But this just provides a general overview of where most of the funding comes from. As we can see, tax revenue is a highly relied upon source of funding for not only Pinole, but for many local governments. Next slide. So before we get into more of the details, I just wanted to take a moment to define a tax and a fee, and make the distinction there between the two. And the city does have both. But for this item, we will be focusing on the taxes. So tax, a tax is imposed by a government without the taxpayer receiving any direct benefits. So examples would be sales tax and property tax, for which the payer does not receive the direct, receive a direct benefit. The revenue that is generated from those sources are typically put into the city's general fund, and they fund general, community-wide activities, so they don't benefit the individual directly. Taxes are also involuntary, and mostly were imposed legally. The fee is applied for the use of a service by the individual or business, and it provides a direct benefit to the payer, and that examples would include building permits, or a recreation participation fee, or the rental of a sports field where a person comes in and pays for a particular service, and they receive a benefit from that. So if we go in and rent one of the community centers, you pay the fee, and you're able to use the community center for an event or party, or things of that nature. So there is a direct link between the fee and the benefit that is received by the payer. Also, fees at the local level are not meant to generate profit, but they're meant to recover the cost of providing a particular service, and fees are voluntary. Next slide. There are also two main categories of taxes, and that includes general and special taxes. General taxes are imposed for general government purposes. You see the list here. Our property tax, sales and use, U U T, so on and so forth. And the uses includes those general services, our public safety activities, parks, road, facility maintenance, administrative purposes, and all of the governmental purposes. The general tax is unrestricted. On the other hand, the special tax is restricted, and it's imposed and collected for a special purpose and deposited into a separate account. An example of this in Pinole would be the Pinole Valley Landscape and Lighting District, which has a property tax that's imposed on business property owners within the Landscape and Lighting District, and those funds can only be used for maintenance and improvements within that district. Next slide. So going into the individual taxes and providing more background, we're gonna start with the property tax. Next slide. So property tax is a value-based tax imposed on real property and tangible personal property. That includes residential and commercial and industrial. It has a fixed statutory rate of one percent of assessed value, and this is guided by Proposition thirteen. Values are based on the nineteen seventy-five property tax values, and each year, the subsequent increases are limited to two percent of the, two percent or the Consumer Price Index growth, whichever is less. Pinole receives nineteen percent of the one percent of assessed valuation, as determined by the county assessor's office. Next slide. And here's a breakdown of the property tax. So as I mentioned, Pinole receives nineteen percent of the one percent. Most of property tax revenue goes toward education, including the K through twelve education, as well as community college level. It also includes a portion that goes to the county's general fund, and also a portion that goes to a number of countywide community services, such as the East Bay Regional Park District, goes to some healthcare programs, library, and water services. Next slide. The property tax is composed of four components. The main component is the secured, and this is those tangible properties upon which a lien can be placed, and that includes land and improvements, as well as buildings. And within that, we have the regular secure property tax that the city receives, as well as funding from the redevelopment property tax trust fund, successor agency pass-through funds. There's also an unsecured portion. This is the tenant-owned personal property, business property that cannot be secured by a lien. An example of unsecured would be a mobile home. The third component is supplemental, and this revenue is generated as a result of reassessment of real property, and it's effective when there's a change in ownership of a property, or a new construction is completed. I mean, it's usually because the property is reassessed and at a higher value, and Pinole receives a portion of that. The fourth component is the real property transfer tax, and it's imposed on the transfer of ownership in real estate. This is a one-time transaction. It is only imposed when there is a transfer of ownership between parties on real property. Next slide. So here's a five-year fiscal transfer property tax, and as we can see, the secure portion is the highest generating portion of property tax. But all of them have been pretty stable over the years. There are some fluctuations in the secure property, and that's mostly due to property sales. When there is a sale, the city does receive nineteen percent of the one percent assessed valuation upon sale. But for the most part, the property tax has been stable over the last five years. Next slide. So going to sales and use tax. Next slide. So, sales taxes apply to all retail, retail sales of goods and merchandise, except those that are exempt by law. And that would include groceries. It would also include medicine, just to give a few examples. The use portion of tax is generally applied to storage use and consumption of goods in California purchased from retailers in other states. So for example, if you make an online purchase, the seller will apply the sales tax rate of the local jurisdiction, and that payment is remitted to the county. And then the county remits those funds back to the local jurisdictions. We tend to use the word county pool, and that is mostly where that pool is generated from those online sales, from purchases of goods from other states, from people in California. Pinole's sales tax rate is nine-point-seven-five percent, and the last two measures that were added to get Pinole to that rate included the Measure S two thousand and six and the Measure S two thousand and fourteen, both of which have no sunset date. Next slide. And then here's a breakdown of the sales and use tax. As we can see, the majority goes to the state general fund. We have the local tax, or what is known as the Bradley Burns Tax of one percent, that comes directly to the city, and the Measure S two thousand and six and two thousand and fourteen, for a total of one percent that goes directly to the city. The remainder goes to a number of countywide activities and programs, and some of those actually come back to the city indirectly, such as the county Public Safety Fund, which is Prop one-seventy-two, and that goes toward public safety services, specifically police for the city of Pinole. Next slide. And then this just shows the five-year transfer, the sales and use tax. This is a total of the regular tax revenue plus the two Measure S measures. And sales tax have been pretty stable. We did see a dip in nineteen twenty, but that was due to the onset of COVID-nineteen. However, sales tax did rebound rather sharply and quicker and at a higher rate than initially projected. So we see the huge jump in two thousand and twenty-one. And in two thousand and twenty-two, the projection came down a little bit from two thousand and twenty-one, just because things are starting to level out a bit with the new norm and the changes based on what's happening with the pandemic. Next slide. So the next tax is the utility users tax, also known as U U T. Slide. And this is an eight percent tax levied on the consumption of electricity, gas, and telecommunications. It should also be noted that U U T can be applied to a number of other services, and that includes water, sewer, sanitation, and cable. And there are cities who use a variety of, a variety of these upon which they levy the tax. There is no sunset date, as of two thousand and eighteen, on the U U T in Pinole. And in comparing our U U T rates with some of our neighboring communities, I looked at those that were similar to Pinole, both, or close to Pinole geographically, and also looking at the population. And that included some of our immediate neighbors like Hercules and San Pablo. And the eight percent rate aligns with the average of those communities. The table below just shows the California agencies that levy a U U T. You see, there's a full portfolio, the different U U Ts that are applied. And currently, Pinole is applying to the top ones that most other agencies apply the U U T to, and that includes telephone, electricity, and gas. And I just, I thought that this was interesting to show how that tax is levied throughout the state. Next slide. So this shows the U U T fiscal trends over the last five years. The majority of U U T revenue is generated by electricity consumption, followed by telecommunication and also gas. The smaller portion, which is pretty immaterial compared to the other three categories, is the mobile telecommunications, and that includes prepaid wireless. So a much smaller amount, and it fluctuate, fluctuates a bit over the years due to some legal changes at the, in the legislation with regard to prepaid wireless. Next slide. The next is the franchise tax. Next. So the franchise tax is a little bit different. It's an agreed-upon fee that is paid to the city from a franchisee for the use of city streets and rights of way. And the city has four franchise agreements, two of which are with P G and E, and they date back to nineteen sixty. And it's for the use of, for the use and for transmitting electricity and gas to customers throughout the city. It also has a franchise agreement through the state for cable, and that's with Comcast, and it's for the provision of video services. And another agreement is with Republic Service for Sanitation Services, and it provides the exclusive right to collect and dispose lost on the waste within the city. The agreement is updated periodically, renegotiated, and the current agreement goes through June thirty, two thousand and twenty-five. The rates are determined annually, on January first, and they're determined by the change in C P I. So this is the only one that fluctuates. The other three are set at flat rates. Slide. And here's the franchise tax over the last five years, with the biggest generators being cable and sanitation services. They've remained pretty stable for all four components over the years. And this is one of the stable sources that the city generates to fund its general purposes. Next slide. So the next section goes over to intergovernmental taxes, or what is also known as intergovernmental transfers. And these are payments on taxes that are imposed at the state level, and then they're remitted down to the cities or local jurisdictions on a proportional basis. Next. So the first one is the motor vehicle license fee. It's also known as the vehicle in Lufi. And it's a tax that is collected based on the ownership of registered motor vehicles, and it takes the place of taxation, taxation on personal property. So this is levied at the state level, is collected, and then proportioned to the city. Next slide. This is a significant source of funding for the city. As we can see, it averages about one-point-nine million dollars, and has remained a fairly stable source of revenue over the years. Next slide. The next is gas tax, and this is not a general purpose revenue. It's actually special purpose. But I wanted to include that because it is one of the intergovernmental, intergovernmental taxes, and it does help to support our C I P projects. So it's used for, mostly for the maintenance and improvement of public streets and roads, as well as any transportation-related projects. This is imposed on gasoline and diesel fuel sales, and it's levied by the state and collected by the state and remitted to the city on a monthly basis. There are some discussions around gas tax and the predictions of things changing over the next few years with the advent of electric vehicles, which may have some impact on this source of funding in the coming years. Next slide. And this just shows the fiscal trends over the last five years. So it's continued to increase with the rising costs in fuel, and continues to be a significant source of funding for the capital activities. Next slide. The next category is other taxes, and that includes our transient occupancy tax and business license And that includes our um transient occupancy tax and business license tax. Next slide. So the TOT is a ten percent tax that is levied on the city or levied by the city for the privilege of occupying quarters on a short-term basis. So this includes any lodging or hotel stays that are thirty days or less for those uh hotels or hotels located in the city. There is no sunset date on this source of funding. And it also aligns with the average TOT of some of our neighboring communities. And in looking at this and comparing to other cities throughout the whole state of California, the average is about eight to ten percent um for TOT that is levied. Next slide. So it's remained pretty stable. Um, it did take a a dip in fiscal year nineteen twenty. And again, that was due to COVID nineteen and with hotels being shut down and and travel um reducing at significant rates. But it still has remained stable, so a bit of a bump up in twenty twenty-one. And it's still a little uncertain, but it's it's rebounding um just as well as some of the other areas. So still continues to be a good source of funding for the city, um, but a smaller source in comparison to some of our other tax revenues. Next slide. And the business license tax is assessed on all businesses doing business within the city limits. This includes those that are located in the city of Pinot and those that are located elsewhere but doing business within the city limits. They're all required to have a business license. We have a flat rate of one hundred and fifty-two dollars per year. And it increases incrementally based on the number of employees engaged in each business, with most business owners paying one hundred and fifty-two dollars. It increases by five percent when CPI increases by five percent. So we look at or analyze CPI increase or growth year over year. And no changes are made to the business license tax amount until CPI increases by five percent. Looking at the rate structures amongst other neighboring communities, um, it was a little difficult to compare those just because the the structures are very different. There are still some that levy a flat tax. Um, and but there are a number of others that use that use a tier system or have even moved to the system of charging the business license tax on gross receipts. So those vary pretty widely, so it wasn't easy to determine what the the average is for that. Next slide. And this shows the business license fiscal trends over the last five years, which has remained pretty stable. Um, in nineteen twenty went decreased a little bit and in twenty twenty-one decreased. And some of that is due to um a number of businesses having to close, unfortunately, due to COVID and then also some of them paying later, just due to some financial challenges that they experienced as a result of COVID. But it continues to be a the stable source of funding. Next slide. And that concludes my presentation. I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Madam uh Finance Director. I will turn now to our Councilmember Toms for questions, please. Good evening, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Um, that was a great report. Um, I wanted to, first of all, note that on the um the slide where you had the the one dollar that talked about where the property tax goes, um, where thirty-four percent goes to school district and nineteen percent um comes to the city. That has been locked in since nineteen seventy-eight, since Prop thirteen. And I would just note for comparison reasons that some cities um get more uh as much as five percent more, but also even though we're in the same school district, they contribute about five percent less than Pinot does. So I just wanted to put that out there for residents to be aware of. Um, as far as um the TOT tax, are we collecting that for Airbnb?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then um the other piece, I I had a question uh regarding, you know, how we have the gas tax, which um that revenue can be used for um road projects. And I'm aware of another funding source, but it's a one-time revenue source. And that would be on um tax-exempt bonds. If we were to issue bonds for one-time expenditures, like road projects or capital projects, just wondering if you're aware of, like, what would the process be uh for doing something like that, for getting some um uh bond revenue into the city for one-time projects? Thanks.
Mayor, shall I answer now?
Please go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. So one option would be general obligation bonds. Um, and those are payable from um property taxes. They can be assessed on property tax bills. So in order for that to um be passed, it would have to have legislative approval by the city council. The majority would have to vote to place that on the ballot. And then it will require two third two-thirds vote voter approval to pass. Um, and that authorizes the general obligation bonds. And then from there, the city would sell the bonds to generate the funding to fund the capital projects. Um, one thing to keep in mind is that it's very specific. So we would have to be, we would have to be very specific about what it's going to fund. And it would only, it would be restricted to those things that are um specified with the issuance of the the or for the ballot measure. Sorry.
And I guess a follow-up to that would be similar to how the school board um has bonds. And and the uh repayment comes on to the property tax. So it's not, it doesn't come out of, say, the thirty-four percent tax distribution. It comes out of an additional assessment that shows up on our tax bills. Is that an option for these kinds of bonds?
Yes.
For, okay, thank you.
That works. Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Toms, I know you are driving. I was gonna ask you, do you have any comments besides your questions? So uh, I know your situation is difficult here. I will. Do you have any other comments?
No, that'll be it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. So I would not come back to you for comments later. I don't wanna, I will just come back, but if we have technical issues, uh, you ask all your question at this moment. Thank you. Then I will turn to the Mayor Protem, uh, David Murphy. Please go ahead.
Yeah, no questions.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Um, Councilmember Martinez, good evening. Please go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for you, Director Guillory. Thanks for your presentation. You had a slide that showed um slide number twelve that showed commercial, residential, and industrial properties. Is the rate of one percent assessed value the same for all the three different categories of property?
Yes.
Thank you. When you mentioned intergover- when you were talking about intergovernmental um state taxes and specifically the motor vehicle license fee, you mentioned they're remedded on a proportional basis. Is that in proportion to the number of vehicles registered in a city?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. So the more uh vehicles registered in the city, or the less or the fewer, then then we would have that proportion of taxes. Okay.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Somewhere in a in the presentation, there's a line, and I've heard there this uh in the past, imposed in lieu of local property taxes. Um, and I wondered why it's important for us to even know that. And we know what is, what it means and and what it's referring to and why it's important for us to even pay attention to that.
Yeah, so historically, it was um the, you can think of the unsecured portion of property tax um for mobile items such as a mobile home, the same type of tax was a applied to vehicles. And the change was the vehicle in Luffy, which instead of um imposing a property tax on vehicles, there was a separate fee that's imposed.
So so somewhere, sometimes a group of people thought, a vehicle is not a property that stays still. But we've gotta describe it somehow. We can't, it is property, but it is mobile.
It's mobile, right.
And so that's where this this phrase comes from. In lieu of local property taxes, we've got the vehicle license fee.
Yes.
Okay.
And it is unsecured and you can't place a lien on it. Um, and so that's where it's generated, the change came from.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Um, I don't believe your presentation um included this, but but also, but when we talk about taxes occasionally, we hear an excise tax. Um, can you tell us a bit about what that means and how it um coincides or not with the kinds of taxes that you've described for us?
So um, gas tax would be an example. So it's a a tax that is um, there's a percentage that is applied to the gas tax or or tax on the sale of fuel. And it also includes a similar tax for things like alcohol and tobacco. Um, but it is um, yes, a a special tax that's that's added to the gas tax. Or a special, a special tax that's imposed on um fuel sales.
Okay, so let me, let me um bear with me here or or play play along with me here. In theory, if if I were to, if I wanted to um impose a litter tax, say, because I wanted it, I wanted the the revenue generated uh going specifically to address litter in the city. Would that be an example of an excise tax?
Yes, that's actually a good example. I didn't think about that. But yeah, that's, a litter tax is a good example of that.
Okay, and in order to even have such a tax, uh, again, it would have to be um on a ballot measure and get uh voter approval. And because it was so specific, we would have to get two-thirds vote.
Two-thirds, yes, because it would be a special tax as opposed to general.
Thank you. Um, talking about general and general general purposes, um, at some point, I think it was slide number ten, there was uh other general purposes somehow described there. Other general purposes, is that, can one say that personnel, city personnel fall under that, other general purposes?
Yes, and um when I mentioned administration, that included, that includes personnel.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. Who then? Councilmember um Tave, please go ahead. Questions?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I just wanna ask, uh, is it working? Okay, um, looking at slide five, uh, there just seems to be, you know, I'm I'm wondering, there's an interval here that I'm noticing after nineteen seventy-five, nineteen seventy-eight, Prop thirteen is enacted. There's an eleven-year span from nineteen eighty-six to nineteen ninety-one for taxing. And then after that, the interval shrinks. What I'm asking is, is that has there been a negative impact with Prop thirteen in place and us having to pass taxes, it looks like every two to four, two to six years, in order to keep up with, uh, because I know you saw the CPI was uh added at two percent, but we have a COLA of three percent, which means that revenue has to keep coming in at some point in order for us to keep up with the curve. Um, and it looks like it's been mostly sales tax in small bites. Is there, I guess, a correlation between those two? And if we're chasing that one percent, when is the next tax? You you know what I mean? Like, should we be thinking about that as a council coming down the line?
Yes, absolutely. And I think that with the um, well, council is, has started thinking about that with the real property transfer tax, for example. Um, and I don't honestly know enough about the history of some of those. I didn't get that much information going back that far as to why the intervals were so much longer then versus now. Um.
I guess what I'm asking is intuitively, it seems like there's a one percent that's missing there. And and then compounded over time, there's this constant need for an another revenue stream or another source of it.
Right, whether it's tax or otherwise.
Or otherwise, right, correct.
Yeah.
Um, the next question I had was um the seventeen million, or seventeen point five million, uh, how does that shore up against our operating budget?
So yeah, so it's not for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two. The budget is not structurally balanced, and that will, that's mainly for some of the um council-directed initiatives that we added, which included some capital improvement projects that are included in the budget. But if we take that away and we're looking at just the basic services, then the the budget is is pretty much balanced.
Okay, okay. Does this, so this is just against this revenue, but we do have the other revenues as well?
All right, you have other revenue and then you have um reserves as well.
Right.
Underlying reserves.
Right, so given that structurally balanced, we're, we're we're structurally balanced. But against our taxes, the eighty-one percent, we're, we're, we're missing some. Okay.
Right.
Okay, um, what, I'm sorry? Did I miss him or should we? Okay, oh, sorry. Um, the question I, next question I had was property tax overview. Um, when it says add valorum value-based, that's at the time of sale, right? For property tax overview is slide twelve. And when we say add value, if the value in the property increases, there's no other revenue, uh, there there's no more revenue. It's not assessed again unless the assessor does it.
Right.
The county assessors.
Or it changes ownership.
I see. Okay, so that's the only time that there would be another chance to tax is if there's a sale.
To increase it, yes.
Okay. Uh, one question I had in the ERA, ERAF for community college this bond? Are those bonds? Because I'm adding these up and it looks like we're paying forty-eight percent fif- uh fifty-three here. And then, I mean, we're we're paying almost fifty-two percent, fifty-three percent of our taxes to schools. All right, I just wanted to note that, that there's a good amount of our taxes that are going to to the school district. Um, other question I had, real property transfer tax. So so the only tax that is not being implemented is a real property transfer tax? Or it is, but it's not being to the degree that some of our partners or I guess sister cities across the county are not.
Right.
It it, so we're pretty much way below there.
Yes, we're, because we're levying the the standard, which is required for general cities, general law cities.
I see, okay. Um, let's see here. Uh, is nine point seven five percent uh sales tax pretty common throughout West County and Contra Costa?
So I did look at a number of agencies. Um, I think it was about seven, including Hercules, San Pablo, El Cerrito. And the average was nine point six percent.
And the next highest, um, what what was the next highest above that?
I believe it's El Cerrito at ten point two five percent.
I see. Okay, so there's about half a percent difference?
Yeah.
Okay, um. Mayor, that's all the questions I have for right now.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Tave. I I don't have any.
Great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Great presentation. I don't have any question at this moment. I will turn it to the public for public comments. Madam City Clerk, please go ahead.
Thank you. We have two in-person speakers, Rafael Menes, followed by Debbie Long.
Mr. Menes, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff, members of the public. I'm not entirely sure whether the microphone is working, but I'm going to offer to be assumption that it is. I have several questions and comments that I'm going to bring up tonight. First off, with regards to the pie chart on slide number eight with where Pinot's revenues come from. As I've stated in the past, and will undoubtedly state again in the future, I think it's beneficial for these sorts of charts to also include the measure S funds in addition to the general fund revenue budget, because that shapes how large a percentage of our budget overall is sales tax versus other taxes. And because the various measure S funds are unrestricted revenue, they're general taxes, as noted. Let's see. With regards to the property tax, uh, Councilmember Tave mentioned some comments about that ERAF. To my, best of my understanding, the ERAF was created to allow the state to basically take a portion of local property taxes and assign it to take a portion of local property taxes and assign it to the state's obligation to ensure that local education is properly funded. So, it's, I would say, different than the other tax chunks within property taxes, because the general obligation bond assessments and so on are things that the voters voted on to go to a particular purpose, whether it's the ERAF is the state taking money to reassign it so the state can use other monies for other purposes, to my understanding. Secondly, I am curious whether the chart on slide number 18 includes the county-wide Measure X adjustment to sales tax. I'm assuming that if it does, it would fall under my county slash mental health where for a public safety segment, but I'm not sure about that. Thirdly, with regards to the 1% CPI change versus the property tax change, I note that most of the city's tax revenues aren't property tax. As the chart on slide eight notes, it's a lot of revenues come in from sources other than the property tax. They come from users' utility tax, from sales tax, from intergovernmental taxes, from public safety charges, and other revenue, like say, for example, the pension trust fund offsetting the cost of pensions, and of course, some other costs increase faster than CPI, like, and again, the aforementioned CALPERS and pension cost. But we're primarily discussing revenues tonight, so I'll leave aside the question of expenditures. Let's see.
And we're at three minutes, it looks like our timer is not working. I just wanted to let the mayor know.
Thank you, Mr. Menes. That's it concluded. How many more questions you have?
I believe I have two or three more questions.
Can you give it in less than 30 seconds, please? Since you don't have the timer as a reference, please go ahead.
Okay, so to put it briefly, I'm curious as to why the transient occupancy tax is anticipated to decrease in FY 21, 22, given that you'd expect there to be more people occupying the hotels and so on as COVID alleviates compared to prior years, and especially given the projection of relatively flat or increased revenue for the users' utility taxes, which would seem to reflect similar trends to the transient occupancy tax. And I believe that was, those were the primary points I wanted to make, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will have staff respond to you, not today, but via email at a different time.
Good evening again, and thank you to our Finance Director, Ms. Gilery, for a very complete analysis of the revenue, I appreciate that. I just had a couple of questions and/or comments. One is, the last fiscal year that I had access to or could put my figures on was 1819, and at that time, the total revenue was 14,478,499. That was a summary of all the revenues, similar to what the pie chart shows, at 17,549,729. So, in three fiscal years, we've increased our revenues by almost $3 million, and I was wondering if there was any analysis as to how that $3 million was spent. I'm just looking at that at a million a year, maybe it was more in one year, less than another. So, that is one question. And the other has to do with gas tax, and it's my understanding that unlike the VLF on the vehicles, gas tax is not based upon our sales revenue. It's based upon the mile, the number of miles that we have in our city. So, we could have a gas station on every corner, and we will always get less money than Hercules, because they have more miles within their city. And that's how it was explained to me when I was on the council. I don't know if that's changed, so that's a question. I think it is very interesting, and a couple of you have already caught, the West Contra Costa Unified School District, but the ERAF fund also is 12%. So, that's a total of 48% that they're receiving, not to mention all the bonds that we have also passed, and people need to look at that as someone needs to be more accountable, I think, to us, versus the 19% the city. I think our Councilwoman Toms made a very good point about the fact that other cities get more, and I think that we need to have the county evaluate that. My last two questions are, what do we have currently in reserves? And two, what is the fund balance overall for all the different funds where money has been appropriated but not necessarily spent, so the money's carried over? And I think that should probably do it for right now, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Finance Director, we heard three questions here and probably five questions from Mr. Menes, and would you prefer to answer all those questions, or would you prefer to look back at the data and send a response via email?
I'd like to review and send a response. I think some of those were comments, as opposed to questions, but I want to make sure that I'm capturing all of the questions.
That's correct.
Accurately, if that's okay, or I can answer them now.
I will let you revise, come back and provide the correct answer based on the data that you have at that time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, can I just ask, did that get circulated amongst the council as well?
Yes, because those questions were interesting questions, and especially one of the question was, you know, an increase of $3 million over three years and how that extra million, $3 million was spent, and I don't think you have it at this moment, but you may have that data available, and you probably require you to do some research and provide those information back to the council. I also would like to give you ample of time to be able to provide accurate information with the backup that you have already in your computer.
Ms. Mayor, if I can, does that get reflected in the minutes as well, when those questions are asked and then an answer is provided by the city?
The, when questions are asked, that becomes part of the record and the minutes, but not the responses unless they happen during the meeting, because the minutes are a record of the meeting. But they do become part of the, you know, agenda packet record, or the other place that they get captured is if there's a memo that goes to council, we're also saving those in its own category, so they get memorialized a couple places.
Okay, let me ask you, would you like to have the answers now?
Yeah, I'd like to be part of.
Madam Finance Director, we're going to go back to those questions, and if you need more time for one specific question, let us know, and if you have it now, please provide it to us. Let's see.
Ms. Mayor, I don't want the Finance Director to feel pressured to come up with an answer. I wanted to have the time to do it, I'm just wondering how that's recorded and pushed back. Somebody at home may have that same question and want to reflect back as to, oh, well, how do I find that answer? Or do we email the city manager, do we email the clerk? I'm just trying to figure out how that information gets funneled back out.
We would have an answer now, and then for the rest, we'll be answered via email, and it can be as an attachment to the minutes.
Very good.
Okay. Question number one is, from fiscal year 2018 to 2019, the general fund balance used to be 14.7 million, and it increased by 3 million to go to 17 million now. How was the extra $3 million spent approximately?
Yes, so that one will require some research.
Okay, thank you. Question number two was related to the fund balance, I believe, if we could have information about what the fund balance was for every single account.
So, I have to compile that information?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe I'm missing one question from Madam, Ms. Long. Yes, thank you, and what the reserves are, please.
Reserves and the fund balance for all funds, yes. So, I can, I'll get that information to Ms. Long and to the group.
And the gas tax?
And?
Yes, the interpretation of the gas tax related to, is that per mile per city interpretation, and how the allocation is still per mile per city as relates to the city of Hercules, which they have more miles of roads, are they getting more than the city of Pino? Is that how the determination is made?
I'll look into that, my understanding was different, but I will look at that, and I'll also do some comparison to Hercules and other cities.
Thank you, and the question that Mr. Menes had was related to a specific question to different slides. I believe you have seven different questions, I do not have all those questions here. Did you notice questions?
I did, I only noted a couple as questions, though.
Please go ahead.
I interpreted as comments, so one is, does the sales tax rate include the county Measure X? And the answer is yes. And then the other question is, that I have is, why is the transient occupancy tax less for 22, 23, based on the historical numbers? And for that, just to stay safe and with some of the uncertainty around COVID-19, although we're seeing that things are starting to reopen again, and travel is up and tourism is up, when we developed the budget for, I'm sorry, not for 22, 23, 21, 22, when we developed the budget for 21, 22, we just landed on a safe figure based on what was happening around COVID and the uncertainty. So, we'll definitely take a look at that for fiscal year 22, 23, and may need to make some adjustments there. Also, I will say that the actuals that have come in, and we review the actuals and do monthly financial reports and updates, we also provide the quarterly updates to the city council, and right now, the actuals align with the budget of $418,000.
Thank you. And the remaining question will be answered as part of the attachment, which will be attached as part of the minutes.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will turn it back to the council for comments. I asked earlier, Councilmember Toms, you said you don't have any comments.
And Mayor, we do have two virtual hands up?
You do?
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, we actually just have one virtual hand, David Ruport.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff and public, it's Irma Ruport. I'm sorry, I'm using his computer. Mayor, this evening, and I want to thank our Marquesha Gilery, our Financial Director, for the report. However, I'd like to understand that as I was going through the report and the charts and the slides and information, they're not all there on the report. And in the future, as an old-timer coming to the city council meetings, I would appreciate seeing that there's new people on the staff, please do these reports a little more detail. Some of the years were missing on the report that's on the computer. There were some charts and slides, dates missing, overviews missing, and it would be helpful to be a little more detailed on the charts with the amounts of who, of what categories these funds, maybe it'll be done on the financial report a little more detail. For example, I'd like to, we receive at least a one pager saying this is on this, a lot of monies. There's a lot of miss or miscommunication out there in the public regarding sales tax, how it's affecting us, because our, you know, the revenue that we get from the sales tax, maybe this year with the economy, high inflation, everything going up, we will, are we going to be able to manage, are we going to stay afloat? There's projects coming around the corner, and will we be able to stay above water? And there's a lot of concerns out there, Mayor, and this budget is so important. So, Marquesha, not, not, this is, I apologize, not on you, you know, but for some of old-timers that we've been here, if we could have a little more detail, I'd appreciate it, and the charts to reflect your presentation, because I found it a little hard to follow. However, the charts were terrific, I was really able to follow the charts, but as an old-timer, again, you know, I like to follow exactly what you're saying. But thanks to you and the council, and thank you, Mayor, for allowing us to have this. It's important to separate the agendas from the council, because sometimes this budget is so important, this was going to keep us afloat for these next couple of hard times that we're, that we're going to have these coming years. Thank you all, good evening.
Thank you for your comments. Just to clarify, I understand all the charts are going from fiscal year 17, 18, all the way to 21, 22, which is a projection, and they have been consistent, and please feel free to reach out to the Finance Director if you think that something is missing, but to me, it's pretty consistent and has all this information, and when it regards to regards to inflation, as the prices increases, the portion of the taxes that the city of Pino is getting is also increasing. So, it's just a proportion of the price. But if you have further questions on the details, please reach out to the Finance Director, she'll be happy to get back to you. Madam Finance Director, do you have anything else to add, please?
Just one thing to add that was inadvertently left out of the staff report was some of the historical information on Pino's add-on measures, so I do apologize for that, because that was meant to be included in the staff report. But we'll make sure that we're including those details going forward, so that there is clear connection between the staff report and the presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next virtual hand?
Mayor, there are no more virtual hands.
Okay, I will turn it back to the city council for comments. I believe Councilmember Toms do not have any comments, but I will just wait a few seconds.
No comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Toms. Mayor Protam Murphy?
Yeah, I didn't have a question, but I did have a few comments with regards to our next step, and I think some of these conversations, I do agree, are very important in conversation with increasing our public engagement around our budget. Before I go into my comments, I just wanted to ask one question, because I was looking into chapter 3.24 of the municipal code, and I know Councilmember Toms had asked, actually a question, I had a similar question around Airbnb being taxed. There's other platforms that would be synonymous with Airbnb, VRBO, and I'm wondering, how is that determined? Is that a city decision or is that a state decision? I guess I should actually ask the city attorney, cashier, if you can give some advice there.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So, the Airbnb collection of the tenant occup, or the transient occupancy tax is actually by virtue of an agreement. We have an agreement with Airbnb that we essentially negotiated their collection of the TOT on behalf of the city, and they remit payment to the city based on the collections. We don't have that agreement with other short-term rental service providers, so that's something that we could look into. To my understanding, at the time, there was, Airbnb essentially approached us, and so we negotiated that with them, and it's my understanding that they're one of the larger providers of short-term rentals within the city, but it's something that we can look into for other providers. It's not anything that's imposed by state law or anything in our municipal code, it's an agreement that we have in place with Airbnb directly.
Gotcha, okay. The reason I mentioned that is, I was thinking also about the rise of technology, right? I think about every day, maybe every week, guilty as charged, I purchase a new Apple app product, and I'm wondering, are those also, are those also a part of our revenue stream when we purchase Apple applications at home?
Through the mayor, I don't know the answer to that question, I'm not sure if the Finance Director does, but.
Yeah, I'm actually not sure about that, because it would show up on your, typically it's on the cell phone bill, it's billed as a part of that, and so I don't know if the, if that's included in the tax for the overall service, but I could look into that, not sure about that one.
Okay, gotcha. If you can circle back with that one, the one pushback I would say is, that doesn't show up on cell phone bills, sometimes it may show up on your, like, directly on your credit card.
Yeah, right, that's true, if you, yeah, purchase with a credit card, it does.
But that being said, my only comments are, I would love to explore how our, first of all, I love this presentation, Director Gilery, thank you so much. Director Guillory, thank you so much. Love the imagery. Absolutely appreciate the dollar bill being cut into different pieces. I think that says so much about what what I see as, you know, as our taxation model. What I would, what I would just say is, it would be intriguing to me to bring this into conversation with regards to our participatory budgeting model. I know we started that work with the American Rescue Plan Act funding, but it would intrigue me on what type of conversations we can have with the public with regards to this. I know tonight's conversation is one example. I'm also wondering how might we use this as a way to, again, ask more questions? Or I do, I realize that certain members of the public tonight had a few questions. Perhaps we could create some type of, you know, next step using the tool we established last year. I think that would be valuable. And I also wanted to uplift what I see as a great resource, which would be essentially using this as, as I know, we get reports and updates with regards to our open access around taxes. How could we keep the public informed as to when that money comes in throughout the year? So in those cycles, and I know that, for example, we have four different quarters where we have report backs around the budget. Perhaps we can create some kind of open data access so that folks know when these type of funds are coming in. And then some of the questions with regards to even how money was spent around our revenue or stream or our reserve. Those could probably be opportunities also to make our process better. So I, like I said, I'm more so intrigued more because this is a great conversation, and this is a great baseline and foundation to what I think is, hopefully, a larger model around our our budgeting process. But between, again, your presentation, the visuals, also the information, I think is really valuable. So thank you so much for putting this together. And the last thing I would just say is, I am very interested in what, at this point in in time, what more collaboration we can do with regards to the school district. It seems like a lot of that dollar bill is spent on education, which is great. And I think many of us value education. So the question is, how do we, as a city of Pinot, create a stronger partnership with our school district, with our school board reps, knowing such a large baseline of our residents' tax dollars go to the school? And that's not for you, Director Guillory, to answer. I just wanted to say that out loud, because I think with regards to, again, our budgeting process and upcoming conversations, I'd be interested to know, how can we work across those lines in a stronger partnership and stronger collaboration so that we both are successful? And I know those are questions that we all have, but just wanted to mention that. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Martinez Ruben?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm thinking about the the last, the last item that you thought about, Mayor Protam. One way to start is create a list of things that are equally are shared or common assets that are used by our residents here in Pinot that are on school district property, for example, or personnel that we might share. And then talk to the trustees that are involved in identifying issues that they believe the city is responsible for. And inform or have that that exchange or that communication about whose responsibility is it if we share residents, students, you know, it's it's, there are instances when a certain group of of decision makers may believe that there are shared responsibilities and instances when they may believe otherwise. And so it's those common kinds of services, perhaps, or personnel that overlap with what we believe are services to be provided to students who are Pinot residents that could begin example, could provide examples of how we might have those discussions. I think what happens is that different representatives identify issues or problems that are specific to the district but are not necessarily in in a position because they are one representative, just like us. And it has to be the entire body that meets with us. We used to have, I think at one point, we had a joint meeting with the school district, just in one instance, because the issue was the SROs. Now, that's a big example. So if we want to talk about collaboration, we can talk about collaboration, because there are examples of how, over time, the school district has gotten away from providing funding for services that some of us believe ought to be shared costs. So just wanted to respond to that, because I think it's out there as well. The discussion about, you know, what does this district do? What does the city do? Whose responsibility is it? And it comes down to who pays for it. And, you know, there are different opinions about a sense of responsibility as well among among property owners who ask, you know, where do my tax dollars go? So that big dollar image, it was very helpful, because that clearly shows that, that for residents who may not have students of their own and and may feel that there's a burden about paying property taxes that don't necessarily show up and manifest in the ways that they would like. You know, there's something to be said about, as well, resident responsibility overall to the community, even though they may not have people, students in in the school district. But the value of education certainly is there. The value of property certainly is there as a shared interest. And so there's plenty of room for for conversations, definitely. The kinds of things to look out for with regard to taxes, and I will be more involved over time, and certainly something that I have to study again and again. Taxes are are, your presentation, Director Guillory, informs us to to a certain extent that it's very helpful to have a presentation like yours. It's always a refresher to even be able to identify the kinds of taxes that are revenues in our city. If we look deeper or further and into how those taxes come about, it's it's a whole years and years of study. I certainly can't claim that that I possess that knowledge. But being involved at the state level with the policy committee, the League of Cities or Cal Cities Policy Committee on Revenue and Taxation, I get a little, a little view, a little window of what tax, what the tax code is, and also what increasingly tax legislation may come our way. Something that had been up for discussion last year and will continue through this year is consideration of online taxes and how the revenue generated from online purchases eventually comes to to the to cities, to the local jurisdictions. An issue involved with online purchases is where the purchases are made and what cities currently have fulfillment centers. We are a city that does not have product fulfillment centers or distribution centers, but we have neighboring cities who do. And the impact of the transportation of goods and services is one of those issues that's being discussed by other groups within the League of Cities to try to come up with some reassessment or reevaluation about a proportionate share of the taxes that could be gained from online purchases, something that does not exist right now, because it's the cities with the fulfillment centers which end up seeing a lot more of the taxes that are generated from, I forget whether it's in-state or out-of-state, online purchases. Because even that is, there's a distinction about that in the code. It's much more than I can understand and explain clearly right now. But I just want to draw attention to that as a matter, as something that's being discussed statewide. The other matter that's being discussed statewide is an attempt by a group of business people to try to put a measure on the ballot this November to, related to tax breaks, really, for corporations, large corporations. And how that measure, if it passes, may impact the availability of 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 taxes to cities. And then as things affect cities, it's, again, related to services. So for residents, for voters to be on the lookout is try to dig up the name of the of the measure. But the Business Roundtable is one of the supporters of that measure right now. And just be on the lookout as as voters or would-be voters about what what is being proposed by that group to go on the ballot this fall, because there may be negative impacts to cities if the if that ballot measure passes, and it's related to taxes. That's it for now. Thank you very much. And much, much more to study for us and future sources of revenue to the extent that we can have them and are favored at all, if they are at all favored by our current residents or the residents that that would vote. It's not always the same group of people that favor them and or end up getting the the services that those taxes pay. Thank you.
Great comments. Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. Ruben, Councilmember Teve, please go ahead.
Yeah, I too would love to have the school district conversation. And no way, I didn't want to devalue education at all. I just have to say that that it is 52, 53% of of what we're paying. So and and highlight that is is something that we have to to work better with our school district. One of the things that I wanted to point out, and maybe this is a question to staff, is, you know, the estimated transfer tax that we had, refresh my memory, it was about 2.3, 2.4 million for the transfer tax if we were to implement something similar to Richmond and El Cerrito and other cities?
Roughly, yes.
Roughly. And so looking at that, it looks like it's about 13.7% of our revenue if we were to add that in, just just doing the quick math that we have from the presentation. And that's, and I just want to highlight with the council, as we're up here, to have that in the back of our minds as we're having these discussions about transfer tax, is it's something that hasn't been discussed. Other cities have discussed this over the last, I think it's 10 years or so, that have implemented it. And it's something that that our city has has not, and we have to look at and and hopefully put something on the ballot for. So I just wanted to have this presentation was fantastic. It was something that I had asked for, and we all agreed to have this discussion, because how we tax, how we use this money for our residents and for and for our our place in West County is very important. And and I'm glad that we had this. I'm glad that we got this information out to the public. And and I look forward to having more conversations about how this revenue is being generated, number one, which I think we got a good, good idea of tonight. I know more questions are going to come. And then moreover, that discussion and how it's used when we get into budget cycle. So thank you for that, the presentation, and look forward to more conversations. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I I agree with you. I understand that the school district plays an important role in the value of our real estate. The more competitive the school district is and the more valuable the price of the real estate is in the City of Pinot, therefore, the more money the city will be generating as part of the tax. On the other hand, when I compare the percentage of taxes that cities are spending other part of the county, specifically in the East County, where the school district is a little bit more competitive, have, to be honest, they spend as much of the percentage in schools. On the other hand, our real estate is a little bit cheaper here, but many families are sending their kids to a private school. So what they are saving in the price of real estate, they are spending in private school. So it is one of the challenges that we have. I'm an immigrant. I'm a first generation immigrant. My parents didn't speak the language I was going, when I was going to school, so I had to face challenges of not knowing the language, of not always understanding what it is. And it's not always due to the quality of our teachers. It's not always due to the quality of our school district. It's also sometimes related to the social democratic of the students who go there and their parents. And I'm a perfect example. You might struggle in the beginning, but if you stay there and if you continue working hard, you can be successful. I cannot change immigration. We cannot change as part of who we are as as a country. In regards to the percentage of tax allocation that the City of Pinot is receiving, it's a conversation that we had two years ago with the council. I would like us to be very sensitive. It's true that the City of Pinot is getting less than the City of El Cerrito, but we're getting more than the City of Hercules. And and also, the city has been working with the county, and the county is willing to help us to get $2 million via Measure X. So, you know, we have to be appreciative of what we are getting, and we have to make sure that we are maintaining a very good relationship with the school district as well as with the county. Otherwise, Pinot by himself would not be able to move forward. And finally, when you got, in regards to taxes, the state of California has some tax challenges that they have to deal at the state level. It's becoming more and more competitive and difficult for companies to stay in the state. And as a business owner, I can, I can tell it, I can tell you that my federal taxes are not lined up with my state taxes, and I end up paying sometimes, just in case of depreciation codes, 179, I end up paying three times more in state-level taxes than I pay at the federal level. So it's something that I've reached out to Councilmember, Assemblymember Buffy Wicks, and I've asked her to look in detail at the taxes and how the state can actually line up with the rest of the, at the federal level. But it's something that we need to work at at the state level. I don't have any other comments. Madam City Clerk, do you have any additional public comments?
No, there are no more public comments.
Thank you very much. If we don't have any other comments, let me go back to.
Mayor, I just have a couple of comments.
Please go ahead, Mayor Protam.
So number one, I wanted to uplift what I heard in a previous council meeting. And City Manager Murray, you've mentioned this before. There is a reclassified position around an assistant to the city manager that's going to be doing a little bit more intergovernmental affairs work, correct?
That's correct.
Can you talk a little bit about that? I know I have, I've had some folks in the public ask about that, and I think this is kind of primed to the conversation. Would they be doing things around this kind of conversation with regards to discussing taxes interintergovernmentally?
So they they could. It's the the origins, actually, the foresight of the city council. So in the current five-year strategic plan that the city council adopted in February 2020, one of the 22 strategies or special projects, remove my mask, I think that might be clear, was to create an intergovernmental affairs or legislative advocacy program. And so the the way that we are going to fulfill, meet that strategy is to, which the city, to my knowledge, hasn't, it hasn't had a function like that recently. And so we're going to fulfill that that strategy by assigning a new staff person. It's not a net new position. We've reclassified an existing, a former position in the city manager's office to a new classification assistant to the city manager. And they're going to be handling a bunch of council-directed strategies and special projects. So they'll be working on citywide coordination of communication engagement. They'll be overseeing information technology. But they'll also be, they'll be doing some work on citywide coordination of grants, but also intergovernmental affairs. So that'll include legislative advocacy at the state level, but also relationships with the, our peer agencies. So that would include the school district, special districts, possibly even other peer cities. I do think that a component of that, for working at the state and federal level, many cities our size who don't have the bandwidth to have fully-fledged in-house legislative tracking services, hire lobbying firms to do that for us and to provide us with a voice onsite in the Capitol. So I expect that the new assistant to the city manager is going to spend some time on intergovernmental affairs. My anticipation is that we'll also be recommending that we establish a contract with a legislative advocacy firm that can legis advocate for us at the federal level and the state level.
Thank you. And I wanted to mention what you said, one of the things, one of the things you said, which was uplifting the grant opportunities. I saw in Director Guillory's presentation, there are some cities that have done some increase in their revenue because of their grant opportunities. So I wanted to affirm that to the public and folks who are, you know, worried about a new position in the city not serving some of these kind of conversations. a new position in the city not serving some of these kind of conversations. And I think we're on the right track to doing that. So I just wanted to uplift that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, Mayor, thank you.
I don't see any other questions from the, from the public. In this case, I will close item number five. And I will move on to item number six, which is the adjournment to the regular city council meeting of April fifth, 2022, in remembrance of Amber Schwartz. Good evening.
Good evening.